Okay, well wait, let's let the numbers go up for a few minutes.
Buenos dias, vamos a esperar que entrenan las personas unos momentos.
Good afternoon, thank you everyone, we're just waiting for everyone to drop into our webinar, we'll get started in just a couple of minutes, thank you.
Buenos dias, todos estamos esperando que sigan entrando las personas, entonces vamos a esperar algunos momentos.
Ah, we got Dr. Shown on.
Glad she's here.
Patty said she'll take care of everything.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Christina Wachs Harper, I'm the administrator-
Buenos tardes, todos, soy la administradora de aquí del distrito-
For our People and Community Services-
Para el Departamento de Servicios de los Estudiantes y Comunitario.
And right now, your voice is coming across to the other, into the webinar, Melissa, we can hear you in both, so let's see if we can figure out, we apologize, parents, we had some technical difficulties this afternoon and had to adjust some of the links, so we are working on the translation channel, so please bear with us.
Estamos teniendo unos problemas técnicos, si pueden esperar un momento, gracias.
This afternoon, we are happy to share again a repeat of our Monday webinar, which is all about social emotional support and learning.
Entonces vamos a tener una presentación sobre el apoyo de socio emocional a aprendizaje.
Our presenters this afternoon are Dr. Catherine Shown from our Ed Services and also Ms. Patty Acevedo from School Mental Health.
Entonces, las personas que van a presentar es Doctora Shown y también Patricia Acevedo, que trabajan para el Departamento de Educación.
Thank you, and I'm gonna ask Mrs. Diana Marmalejo, our coordinator, to please share with us and to provide our welcome for this afternoon.
Entonces voy a pedirle a la señora Marmalejo, así puede dar la bienvenida.
Good afternoon, parents, we want to take the opportunity to welcome you to this evening's presentation.
Buenas tardes, padres, queremos tomar el momento para dar la bienvenida a esta presentación.
Parents, as we move closer to distance learning, there are going to be challenges. However, tonight, we are going to share some valuable tips with you regarding ways to face those challenges with success.
Vamos a intentar juntarnos y van a ver muchas cosas que van a ser difíciles, pero vamos a trabajar juntos para enfrentarlos.
We know that there is no specific way to teach every child, but working with them, you learn different methods, how they learn.
Sabemos que no hay una forma específica de ayudar a un estudiante para que ellos aprendan, pero sabemos que trabajando juntos y con ellos podemos aprender en la forma mejor para apoyarlos.
Tonight, we want to start off with a solid tip for parents and caregivers.
Hoy queremos empezar con diferentes formas de apoyar sólidamente a nuestros padres y los que cuidan a los niños.
We want to remind you to take care of yourself.
Queremos recordarles también que se cuiden uno mismos.
To stay calm.
Que sean calmados.
And to manage your emotions.
Y que manejen sus emociones.
Our children are very intelligent and they know-
Son bien inteligentes y saben-
How we are feeling.
Cómo nos sentimos.
Today, our experts, Ms. Acevedo and Ms. Shown-
Nuestros expertos, señora Acevedo y señora Shown-
Will be sharing some wonderful information, again, we thank you for joining us this evening.
Van a compartir información muy importante, gracias por participar.
And now I see Mr. Martinez was able to join us, our superintendent, would you like to share a few words, Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, I'm not sure if I'm on the side of the community or the side of the panel in regards to this video, you could hear me?
You're on the panel, sir, yes.
Incredible, well, thank you very much, and thank you for allowing me to get in here, and I want to, first of all, thank you, Ms. Marmalejo for your support in our translator for supporting this effort. Dr. Wachs Harper, you've been incredible at putting these meetings together, I appreciate your tenacity, doing these twice a week at the large number that we support our families, I welcome you to a new school year, parents, it's gonna be exciting, and I do know it is the first time for all of us to start off a school year in under a distance learning platform like we ended. So, the exciting piece is there's so much more robust teaching and learning that will occur beginning the 11th. So, again, ask good questions, there's no bad questions, so feel free to use a Q and A, to put those questions in there for us to respond to. We'll have the opportunity to meet often, unfortunately through Zoom, at least for the first part of the school year, but I'm looking forward to see you either through a screen on the monitor and hopefully in person at our school sites in the next few months. Have a wonderful year, it is a new school year, so happy new year, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, Melissa, would you share for our Spanish-speaking parents that we do have Tere now on our Spanish channel, if they'd like to switch over, just in case?
Sí, entonces ya va a estar la interpretación a la misma vez, solamente tienen que ir al icono de abajo, es un mundo que dice interpretación, lo escuchan y ahí va a decir español, entonces ya está la interpretación de español, gracias.
Thank you, and now we'll turn it over to Dr. Shown and Ms. Acevedo for our social emotional learning, thank you so much for being with us today.
Thank you, Dr. Harper, let me see if I can start sharing my screen. Good afternoon, parents, thank you for joining us today, Catherine Shown from Ed Services, and so honored to be here, co-presenting, co-piloting with Ms. Patricia Acevedo, we've been working for a long time, and such a great honor that we have this opportunity to share this afternoon with you, to present and to hear you and some of, you know, the questions that you may have for us, and we thank the Division of People and Community Resources, Dr. Harper and her team for making this happen, Ms. Acevedo?
Good evening, good afternoon, I'm happy to be here. I love working with parents and sharing with parents, I want to thank Dr. Wachs Harper for making this possible, for us to be able to share information with parents in ways that are convenient for them as well as giving them more information and the ability to ask questions as well. I'm Patty Acevedo, I am the Director for Student and Family Support Services and School Mental Health Services, and I love working with Catherine, okay, so let's get started.
Thank you, okay, and parents, much like the new world that we're in, Ms. Acevedo and I are back to being students of learning, just like our students, right? We have some new changes, and so we are going to be asking you to have some grace, because as we navigate this world of technology, we will make mistakes along the way, and I think it's important for us to model for our adults learners and also our children. So, again, thank you for being here, and just like what Ms. Acevedo said, one of our favorite roles is be a parent like you and be able to learn alongside you, so this session is titled "From Trauma Informed to Trauma Transformed Schools", and I'm gonna start off with this little activity that we are going to modify for the purpose of this presentation, and this is what you call, and I'll share with you what it looks like on the website, it's called a Padlet, it's much like those sticky notes or post-it that you use, those little papers that looks like this, that you put on your refrigerator to put little notes to yourself, but it's online, so Padlet is an online platform that we are using at school, your kids will be using, our adults, our teachers, we're using to engage our, you know, learners, both on the adult and the young learners. So, here's what it would look like, if we are to do this activity, we'll ask you to write your first and last name on Padlet, if you have a QR code, you just scan it with your phone, this little, you know, black and white square illustration there, and we want you to think about the top three ways that you support self-care. And self-care is basically anything that you do for yourself to enhance your physical, mental, emotional, relational and spiritual well-being, and we also can see on the top it says self-compassion in daily life. I know this kind of things are easy to talk about, but really much harder to do. So you can see on the physical part, it would say what are those things that you do to take care of your body, things that you do mentally to reduce your state of agitation, make you relax, emotionally to soothe and comfort you when you're feeling down and sad and frustrated perhaps, relational is how we connect with others, and spiritual is committing to our values. So, go ahead Patty, I'm gonna add while I screen.
So, one of the things we're looking at is really finding it important, and the reason we're starting here is that it's really important that you, as a parent, maintain your own emotional health. The same way you put on a mask when you're in an airplane before you put it on your child, you need to take care of yourself. The times, the epidemic, it has really been traumatic for many of us, and it has really weakened both all of us, both physically and emotionally, as well as relationally, because some of us feel alone, some of us feel sad. So, in order to support your children, we need you to take care of yourself, and that is the most important message we want to give you this evening, is to make sure you find some things, and they don't have to be anything extravagant, it could be something as simple as doing some deep breathing, or just taking a little few minutes and give some gratitude. So, these are some of the things that we're discussing this evening. So hopefully, you take a look at this, I know there's so many other things you can do, but maybe choose a couple right now that you can do after this presentation is over. Okay, Catherine?
Okay. So I'll share the Padlet in a few minutes when we share, when we switch screen. And so, as Ms. Patty Acevedo said, this is another way that we look at what self-care is, right? Self-care is an ethical imperative, because the quality of the care we give is dependent upon our own well-being. As you can see on that illustration earlier, when we're mentally, physically, emotionally feeling our best, then we can give our best. The self-care is giving the world the best of us instead of giving what's left of us. One way as well that we will be guided here, as we have already done so in the past, is to look at everything in the lens of equity, and this is the working definition that we use for what equity is, and truly is, if you look at this, this is what we want for our students, this is what you want for your children as they come to school, right? Each and every student receives what they need to succeed by enacting policies, practices and programs necessary to, one, eliminate those educational barriers based on gender, race, origin, color, disability or other status, and the second is to provide equal educational opportunities and ensure that those who are historically underserved or underrepresented population receive the same rigorous standards for academic performance expected of all children and youth. So, those equity strategies, you see them working best if they are well-planned, they're systemic, they're happening throughout the system in all schools, in all areas of our district, and they're primarily focused on the core of teaching and learning process, which is curriculum, instruction and school environment, and again, back to feeling like our students can excel because we give them high levels of support in all areas. But working definition is one thing, it's another when it's applied in real life, so as we all do in our society, we constantly struggle with what equity is being deliberate in terms of our continuous interrogation and dismantling of structural oppression. It just means it's looking at all aspects of the system to make sure that it's functioning in ways that supports the very best needs of our students, all of them, but particularly those who need the most support.
So, one of the things we're talking about this evening, and we are starting what we're sharing with you, is we're looking at our schools and our classrooms and coming from, coming from the point of view of our teachers being informed about trauma and understanding trauma, to creating schools that transform trauma, and that's where, what we're talking about this evening, as well as social emotional learning. So some of the things that Catherine and I are sharing with you this evening are what we have been sharing with principals and administrators as well as our teachers, our teachers will have an intensive session coming this, the end of this week during their professional development to understand and to implement some of the strategies, but as well as some of the skills. What we really need to establish is a common language about trauma-informed, about PBIS, about social emotional learning, about our multi-tiered behavioral supports, and we want to share that common language with you as parents so that we're all understanding and saying the same things. We want just a little bit this evening to deepen our understanding of how trauma really impacts learning, and many of our kids are a little bit traumatized by what's going on, by what they see on TV, by what they hear, by this whole pandemic that's going on. So we really want to share that understanding, but also how do we create a school or a classroom so that everyone has that same understanding and we're coming from that approach? The other piece is, we want to make sure every member of our school community supports all of our kids, all of our students, to be physically safe, socially safe, emotionally safe, and then academically safe. That will be the most important thing that we start with, even virtually, we're looking at trauma-informed. We also are taking a look at the whole child, and by that, we're looking at their relationships, we want them to learn how to regulate their emotions, we want them to feel that they're connected to their school community as well as to other students in their classroom, and we want them to somehow practice some of those skills throughout the school day, through virtually, we're gonna have to be very creative. We want the school staff and the district staff to really work together as a team, because each and every one of us is responsible for every student in our district, and again, the outcome is that we have that understanding and we have that language. And we really need to be able to be available and to adapt to changing, to the needs of our students. We need to anticipate what might happen, what they might be feeling and how they might react to anything that takes place during the school day as well as at home. Catherine, did you want to add anything to that? You're off, you're muted.
I think we covered it all, Ms. Acevedo, I think just wanted to make sure that, how important those words are highlighted, because when we have common language and shared understanding and we're providing coordinated supports, then things get, you know, a lot responsive to the needs of our students, right? And as you said, we're very proactive and preventative in our ways. And so, it really begins with knowing our students and their families really well, right? So you can see in this diagram that we need to Maslow first before we can Bloom, and Maslow's are our, well, physical, physiological needs, that safety and security, feeling safe, as you said earlier, feeling that they belong, self-esteem and self-actualization. And then the right side are the areas that our students experience with those rigorous teaching and learning environment. And so, right now, as we know, what's happening is that our students, just much like parents and all our teachers in the community, we want to feel safe, we want to make sure that our health and well-being are of the top concern for our school community. So, we're focusing on all of those, but we're prioritizing first on the feeling of safety. And when our students begin school next week, we want to make sure that they feel that we are ready for them, that even though we're in distance learning, that there are that sense of connection, their self-confidence and sense of achievement is being prioritized, that there is that consistency, spontaneity and creativity that is still happening, even if it might look a little bit different than what we're used to in face-to-face learning.
If I may interrupt briefly, I have, we have our board member, Dr. Promin, who's joined us, I don't know if Dr. Promin, if he'd like to say a few words before we continue, welcome.
That's okay, I'll speak later, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Promin, go ahead.
So, when we say trauma and trauma-informed, what do we actually mean? We really need to be clear about that with everybody, we need to understand what trauma is, and we need to understand what trauma-informed is. Let's go to the next slide, Catherine. So, so there are several different definitions, and there are two that are most common. The first one is the one I'm gonna say, this is my personal bias, because it's the easiest to understand. So, trauma are experiences or situations that are emotionally painful and distressing. They overwhelm people's ability to cope, leaving them powerless, they feel powerless. And I think we can all say that there are some things that have been happening recently that make us feel powerless, that make us, make it difficult to cope at times through, through the pandemic, as well as some of the things that are going on in communities. SAMSA, which is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, they describe trauma as individual trauma results from an event, a series of events, a set of, or a set of circumstances that is experienced by an individual as physically or emotionally harmful or life-threatening, and that has lasting adverse effects on the individual's functioning and mental, physical, social, emotional or spiritual well-being. That is the most common definition of trauma. But usually what you see, especially for kids, is it's trauma results for them primarily from relationships that are disrupted, from relationships that end, and that could be for a variety of reasons. A parent could be deported, a parent could be incarcerated, a parent could be very ill, and that can be traumatic for some of our students, some of kids, kids act differently and respond differently. What stems from trauma is that sense of helplessness, that sense of disconnection. If you can understand a time when you felt like you cannot cope, you felt very powerless, there's also a sense of disconnection, meaning that you didn't feel like anyone could understand how you felt at that time, that no one else would understand. And there are two different types of trauma, there's direct trauma, when we can identify exactly what it was, if it was a car accident, if it was a situation, even parents divorce can be traumatic, or if there's domestic violence in the home, the child witnessed violence, it's very identifiable. Then there's the more subtle types of trauma, it kind of accumulates, those are the little things that happen, maybe a parent is an alcoholic or is someone in the family is using drugs, it could be an older brother or sister, and it's the constant, it's happening constantly, and you may think it's not affecting, but it does affect, it affects everyone in the family. So those are the two different types of trauma, and the quote that I like best for parents to remember and to understand is that your kids, children are like wet cement, okay? Whatever falls on them is gonna make some kind of impression, and you as their parents are what they're looking at, so we really want to remember that. The next slide, Catherine? So there are lots of different kinds of traumatic experiences, one of the ones that's not on here that should be is, is the coronavirus epidemic. But these are different kinds of traumatic experiences that sometimes we forget about, but I feel just from our office and from some of the referrals and some of the families who come in asking for assistance, a lot of it is about loss, either through death, either through deportation, it could be through incarceration, and now it could be, sometimes some of the grief and loss is the family member is in the hospital, and, you know, there's not a lot of ways we can connect with that loved one. There's other types of traumatic experiences, domestic violence is one, physical abuse, some of the wildfires that are happening are very traumatic. Grief can be very traumatic, even though it's very normal, it's a normal emotion, it can still be traumatic. School violence, if kids are witnessing violence at schools, you know, community violence, all of those things are some examples of traumatic experiences.
Patty, I just wanted to add on the grief, even something that may appear so simple, like our students, sometimes their greater connections are in school, right? Their friends, they're very close with some adults in the school environment, and when that's disrupted, that routine is like you've lost something, it's not just, grief is not just necessarily associated with people, but those, those things are near and dear to us, and now you have to depart those routines, and that could be very distressing for our students as well.
So when we look at school, what is, what happens to kids who have these traumatic experiences? And what UCLA has found, these are the things that they have done through research and finding kids with traumatic experience, it really does take a toll on their academic achievement. These are the kids that have more days absent from school, they're not attending school, it's about our attendance. These are kids that because of their self-regulation, because of their inability to self-regulate, we see more suspensions and expulsions for them because of their behaviors. Sometimes their behaviors are out of control. Sometimes due to the absent days and being suspended, their reading abilities and their comprehensive comprehension skills are much, are much more decreased than their peers. Their GPA, their grade for our older kids, their GPA is lower for a variety of reasons, but these are the areas, and then also, these are the kids that sometimes don't make it to graduation. They tend to, you know, leave high school earlier, they tend to drop out and find it very difficult to finish high school, so we see the graduation rates drop. And these are one of the reasons why we really want our schools to go from trauma-informed to trauma-transformed, so we can change these- so we can change these, these things that are happening to some of our students.
I just wanted to highlight as well, if we noticed, parents, all of these things right here, the traumatic experiences, it does manifest itself almost like a learning disability or a behavioral disability. But many of them are actually learning or behavioral difficulties because of those traumatic experiences that we currently, our students are currently experiencing. So that goes back to that concept earlier that we brought up, that we really need to know our students really well to know, no, this is like a temporary state. And if all adults come together and provide that kind of environment that's loving, that's caring, that's safe, our students will, you know, conquer this stage.
So one of the things Kaiser did a few years ago is come up with what's called adverse childhood experiences. And they were doing a study and they've done several research studies. So I'm going to let this little film, this little video kind of give you a little bit of background and we'll come back and talk about it a little bit more.
What does your parents' divorce have to do with your risk for heart disease? If your mother had a drinking problem when you were growing up, are you more likely to suffer from depression as an adult? Here's what you should know about ACEs. ACEs stand for Adverse Childhood Experiences, extremely stressful events that can happen to a child growing up. Some experiences are so stressful that they can alter brain development as well as the immune system, increasing the risk of lifelong health and social problems in adulthood. The term comes from the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study, landmark research that shed new light on the root cause of everything from stroke and liver disease to substance abuse and mental illness. In the late 1990s, an epidemiologist from the Centers for Disease Control and a preventive medicine doctor at Kaiser Permanente set out to understand the association between childhood experience and lifelong health. They asked over 17,000 people in the Kaiser Health Plan in San Diego about their health history, as well as difficult questions about their experiences growing up. Anda and Felitti tallied up 10 different kinds of adversity in this largely middle-class and college-educated population. They were stunned to see how common ACEs were. 21% of all respondents were sexually abused as children. 19% grew up with someone who suffered mental illness. 28% had been physically abused. And two out of three respondents had experienced at least one ACE. The researchers next looked at how someone's ACE score or the number of adversities they experienced related to a wide array of serious health and social problems. They saw that the more ACEs someone had, the greater their risk for poor outcomes compared with someone with no ACEs. Someone with an ACE score of four had twice the risk of heart disease and cancer. Someone with an ACE score of five had an eight times greater chance of being an alcoholic. And those with an ACE score of six or more, on average, died 20 years earlier. With every major problem they looked at in the ACE study, the risk went up for each additional adverse experience in childhood. As Dr. Robert Anda says, "What's predictable is preventable." It's important to remember that ACEs are not destiny. ACEs are a tool for understanding the health of a population as a whole. For individuals, an ACE score can be a tool for understanding their own risk for health and social problems and empower them to make changes for themselves and their children. ACEs tend to get passed down from generation to generation and are common across all income levels, races and cultures. But increasingly, people of all different professions and backgrounds are coming together to discuss how ACEs affect their communities. They're finding new ways to treat and prevent ACEs. Many doctors are starting to screen their patients for ACEs as part of their medical history. More schools are becoming trauma-informed, considering the source of problem behavior when disciplining their students instead of immediately suspending or expelling them. To learn more about interrupting the cycle of adversity and improving health and wellbeing for the next generation, please visit kpjrfilms.co.
Okay, so adverse childhood experiences is something that we all have. And it is something that, you know, this study kind of collected all of the information. How does that affect us? I think that the most important piece in that I feel is the quote that what is predictable is preventable. So if we can kind of look at some of those things, we can prevent them more often. So for education, we're looking at kids having more, greater issues with social and emotional, as well as cognitive skills when they have higher scores of ACEs. And, and then as they talked about in the, in the video, there was more of an increased risk of the, of the health challenges that show up later in life. And it's just important, it's not something we want to, you know, make sure we know everybody's ACE score. That's not the importance. The importance is understanding that it's there and that we need to do as many things as possible to prevent it taking hold and not paying attention to what's going on.
So we, all of those information, I think we want to go back and ask, how does PUSC define a trauma-informed school? So want to take a moment for us to look at this definition. It says, "Trauma-informed schools acknowledge the prevalence of traumatic experiences in our student lives and create a flexible framework that provides universal support that is sensitive to the unique needs of students and is mindful of avoiding re-traumatization." So we want to acknowledge that. And what that means is that if we know that all, almost all of our students are coming back, having experienced this trauma of the pandemic, even if coming back virtually, we need to be ready for that and have those coordinated supports to make sure that our students feel safe, that they belong and they matter.
Okay, so we need to look at what trauma-informed, what does it look like now during COVID-19? What's our approach going to be? So again, it's, it's really about safety and protection. We really need to, that's going to be first and foremost as we work virtually, as well as as we open up schools. But we also have to be aware and our teachers need to be aware, all of us do, of the, what this pandemic brings to our kids. The grief and the loss, more so because they're not seeing their friends, they're not seeing their family, they may not see grandparents. Many of our families are experiencing isolation. They're experiencing economic hardship. Some of the basic needs aren't being met. We're seeing quite a bit of that here in our office. So we make sure that's available for them. But all of these things this pandemic brings could be more violence in the home, as well as abuse in the home because of the situation of COVID-19. So it's really essential for us to have this trauma-informed approach. And we really need to, educators need to be able to understand that, but also be able to teach and students can learn. So we really need to connect our students, make sure they have a sense of belongingness and have our teachers be able to reach out to our kids, even through virtually as much as we possibly can. And as a community, as a district, we really want to assure you, the parents and the caregivers, that we are strengthening your child's wellbeing. We're making sure that they're feeling safe. And that's the importance of this whole trauma-informed approach.
So what does that look like when our students return to school, whether virtually for now, hybrid later, or face-to-face? And this is what we call the multi-tiered systems of support framework. And this is what we're going to be using. We already have them in place. But of course, as Ms. Acevedo said, we need to adapt it right now that our world of teaching and learning changed us. So if you look at the bottom tier, it's called Tier One. What's available for all students? What does instruction look like virtually? And it's not just academic and socio-emotional learning, right? Behavioral and socio-emotional. Relationship building in small groups and homerooms advisory and even in content areas by grade level. And that's from PK all the way to 12, that that's a norm, an expectation for all. And sometimes we take for granted that our students, because they're big and they're high school, that they don't need this relationship-building connectedness strategies with adults. And that's really far from true, right? Big bodies, but they're just as, you know, need, have the same needs. For Tier Two services, that means if everyone gets this, you know, robust academic and cell and behavioral instruction online, then there will be some groups that needed a little bit more. So that should be around 10 or 20% of our students and they should be able to get services above and beyond those available for all. So this is where we meet with a small group of students. We hold groups. And there's counselors, the school mental health. We have our PBI as teams in the school side, all working together. Students and families who indicate that, that they have certain needs, like right now with technology, with security and other things. And that's when we support those additional needs. And then on Tier Three, sometimes despite all of these available things, there's a few that needed more and more intensive support. So we will also be able to provide those supports. We are tutoring one-to-one, we have partners in the community. Again, we have counseling and clinical, you know, supports available. So the squares on the left side just shows pretty much the explanation of what I just mentioned. We start with trauma, which is about being preventive, right? Preventive, proactive and systemic. And we are going to constantly use assessments. So if you know, the schedules will have teachers on Wednesdays while doing asynchronous learning and having one-to-one or small groups with students. They're also coming together as a professional learning community and constantly looking at the data. What do our kids need academically, socio-emotionally and behaviorally? How might we intervene? How many more supports do we need? Who might we be able to work with? And our teacher specialists also go into classrooms and helping out during those times so that we really truly are providing the best services for our students. And then on the right side, it just shows some information about examination of risk, right? Leadership professional, what to look for and how do we know when students need more of the Tier Two supports or Tier Three? And what are those resources? And being flexible and creative with our resources.
So this is something that, that we are really sharing with our principals, with our administrators, with our teachers. I like this, this picture, not, not just because it's so colorful, but also because it feels like a hug. I know we can't hug right now, but this feels like a hug. And if you look right in the middle of it, are our students. And around our students are the staff, as well as caregivers and parents. So those are the two most important hugs that are taking place and making sure. And then our leadership teams and the system, the district system that we have, with so many different things available for our families and for our students. As Catherine went over the multi-tiered system, we do have several things in place to provide supports to families and students. The outside is just really making sure that these principles for our schools and for our community are taking place, that we're making sure first and foremost that everybody is understanding trauma and stress and how it impacts the brain, how it impacts learning, how it impacts just simply being a person in this world right now. And then you see on both sides, we're, we're looking at resilience. I know Mr. Martinez for our administrator kickoff, he focused on resilience because that's something we need to continue to build, not just with our administrators, but with our kids and with, you know, help them to be as resilient as possible. Much of that is going to come out of socio-emotional learning that's done. The other side is really looking at the equity. And I know Catherine touched, Dr. Schoen kind of touched on that, the cultural humility, understanding each other's culturals, but also cultures, but also looking at the equity piece for our students. Safety and predictability, as we shared earlier, you know, some of our kids really need that predictability. Most of our kids do. I know some of our adults do too. Having that schedule, being able to know that, that when I go back to school, that person is going to be there. We need to collaborate and empower with our teams, but also empower our students to have a voice, to share what they're thinking and feeling, as well as to give them the skills to collaborate with others. And most of all, everybody, parents, teachers, students, we all need compassion. We need compassion, first of all, for ourselves, as well as for each other. And we need to be able to depend on others. I think we found out through, through this pandemic that it's really important not to have that dependability, that we're kind of isolated. So those are the things that are the principles for trauma-informed, but it's also, you know, all of the things we want to bring to your kids in the classroom. You're off, you're muted. Catherine, you're muted.
Thank you. Like that grace, right? Reminding each other. So when considering trauma-informed practices implementation, first we have to connect the dots as a system, right? There are already many great things that are happening within our district and we're already in place. And we need to use it as a starting point and leverage those internal resources. So we evaluate and utilize those practices. Ms. Acevedo talked about the equity work, the culture-responsive education, knowing our students, their background, using what we know about them to leverage them, to not just be, be present, participating, asking questions, but also driving the teaching and learning. That's engaged teaching, right? This is the time where we would like to see our students thrive and own, have that agency of learning. Restorative practices, you know, we have had some wonderful work within the city for restorative Pomona. And we have partners, Dr. Promen is a part of that as well and many of, you know, our community members and staff. And when we talk about Tier One earlier, about making sure that that practice of the community circles is not just happening in one classroom or a couple of classrooms and a couple of schools, that that's the way that... that we, you know, operationalize the support for our students. Socio-emotional learning, as Ms. Acevedo said, student and adult, the co-creation and partnerships. So we have wonderful partnerships with our communities, you know, members and some really awesome organizations. Our positive behavior intervention supports. We have 33 of our schools are implementing it. And that routine that they have established, that can carry very well over to distance learning. And some of you parents or many of you have attended our training of how we can implement PBIS at home. And again, this couple of items here, the safety, you'll see that over and over again. And it's really, really important for all of our divisions and departments, those what we're doing right now with Ms. Acevedo, to work together. Because when we don't, then you have to, you create gaps in services or you duplicate services. And we want to continue this partnership way beyond just the beginning of the school year.
As we're building those trauma-responsive schools, these are the building blocks that we want to implement. It's really important that a trauma-responsive school prevents and manages traumatic stress. We need them to have that in their building blocks. Learning, as we know, learning's best accomplished when there's a caring teacher-student relationship. We know that. Research has shown us that. And we know that as people, if you think about a teacher that may, you know, that worked for you, usually they took an interest and some caring. So that's the piece that that is part of the prevention and management of secondary. It's about the relationships. So the second thing is looking at mindfulness. Mindfulness can be brain breaks, as some of the teachers use. Really doing this throughout the day, not just a few minutes in the morning and then we begin our day or at the end of the day before we go home, but throughout the day. We take those few moments. It doesn't have to be where we sit for hours in a yoga position and hum, but more about taking a little bit of a break, taking a deep breath. I know that Dr. Perman has provided breath work that many of our staff and some of our parents have participated in. And that is very powerful. That is something that, just breath work, just taking that moment and taking a breath before you say anything, before you, you know, search a little bit more as to what, why you're so upset. The other piece, and we talked about this earlier, but they are, you know, and I put them as separate building blocks here. We need to really be concerned about every child's physical safety, their psychological safety, and their emotional safety. The strong relationships, we talked about the child and the teacher relationship. But we also need our staff to have strong relationships, that they build relationships with parents, that they build relationships with other staff members at the school side. And that that is shown throughout, that we're using healthy socio-emotional skills and modeling it for students, but also building those relationships with everyone that's connected to that child.
And I think the last part on the top, again, just reiterating that the socio-emotional learning and positive behavior intervention and support will not be on top of other things, that they are embedded and integrated into the core curriculum and instruction.
Sorry, Catherine, I missed that one. So what we're going to look at right now, I, you know, I think this is the best visual of a child who has that toxic stress, who has that trauma and how hyper-vigilant they become to everything and how their brain and their body is constantly activated by the stress that they feel and how they bring that into the classroom, that negative reactivity they bring to the classroom, to everyday events. You may see it at home when they react to things that seem kind of minor and small. These are some of the ways that, you know, what it looks like, both physically and what it looks like in the classroom. So we really need to make sure that our classrooms are safe spaces for our kids. We need to help them reduce their hyper-vigilant focus. And we need to help them direct their attention to learning because many times their direction is on whatever is making them stressed out and that has traumatized them. So let's take a look at this video.
The reality is that we all need a certain amount of stress, a certain amount of anxiety to perform well. If we don't care about that exam that we're going to have tomorrow, we'll probably fail. If we're going to cross the street and a truck is coming at us, we have release of adrenaline. We have release of a hormone that we call cortisol. We want to jump out of there. And adrenaline and cortisol are going to help us do that. So there's that good amount of stress. But if all day long you're feeling like a truck is coming at you, day after day after day, that's going to take a toll on the body. And the amygdala obviously here is has greater activation in the PT. We were able to image children that had experienced trauma and compare those brain images with children that didn't have an experience of trauma, didn't have symptoms.
Right. An exaggerated fear response.
An exaggerated fear response. With decreased activation in areas that we need to control that emotion in the frontal areas.
Exposure to early adversity and trauma literally affects the structure and function of children's developing brains. So the kid next to them hits them or the teacher reprimands them in a way that they're uncomfortable with, right? Literally what they're feeling, that activation is like there was a truck coming at them. You can give something that will mask symptoms, right? For example, if someone has a cough, right? You can give them a really strong cough serum that will suppress their cough. But if it's because they have tuberculosis or lung cancer, then what you're doing is merely masking the symptoms while the disease process continues to fester. We know what's happening in children's brains and bodies with the experience of toxic stress. So the question now is, what do we do about it?
Okay, so we talked about toxic stress. And we've seen, we have a visualization of what it looks like for children that have that toxic stress and may not have some of the tools, some of the brain breaks that they can self-regulate some of their emotions as, you know, and how to focus in the classroom. So we need to look at having some of these breaks and some of these mindfulness situations within the classroom throughout the day. We have to be aware of where the student is at. It might be a little uncomfortable at first. With kinders, we may want to try to make it a little more fun to where it just becomes something that we do every day. Mindfulness and brain breaks are evidence-based. They're based on science. They're based on brain science. And we really, in a trauma-transform classroom, we really want to make sure that we give our students the gift of mindfulness. So if we could all, and I know you're at home and it may feel a little awkward, and you don't have to close your eyes, but if you could just put both of your feet flat on the floor and maybe straighten your back up in your chair, wherever you're sitting, and just, if you don't want to close your eyes, fix it on a point just below that you're looking down at and stay there and just take one deep breath in. And then slowly let that breath out. Now what I want you to do is when we take in that breath, I want you to take in the breath of gratitude. The gratitude for the fact that you're here for your children. I want you to really get that sense of what you're doing as a parent right this moment. Yes, we've all made mistakes, but I want you just to take that deep breath in of gratitude for you as a person and as a parent. So let's take that deep breath in and slowly let it out. And one more time, we're going to take that deep breath in of gratitude. And when we release it, we're going to release all those things that we tell ourselves we don't do right. Not doing this right as a parent. If I was a better parent, I would do this. My child would be here if I was a better parent. You're going to let that go on the release breath. So let's breathe in that gratitude of all the things you do well and all the things that you are for your child. Breathe it in. And now we're going to let go of all those things we tell ourselves about the mistakes we've made or we should have done things differently. We're going to let all of that go on our release breath. Let that all out. And you can even make a sound, okay? As you let it out, like, ah, just let it all out. So we feel a little bit better? I know I do, okay? I don't know. How do you feel, Dr. Shown? Feel a little better?
Yes, thank you. I can see that, Dr. Perman, that was part of the sky breathing, those exercises really we take for granted, how many, how much benefit it does have for our whole well-being. And I like what you said, Ms. Acevedo, about, you know, what we want to see is that it's not just something that we do randomly sporadically, but it becomes who we are, right? Taking care of ourselves means taking care of our students. I'm going to use our, a couple of our board members' statements during our kickoff. And our board president, Ms. Adrian Coniger, said that we want the most, you know, deep experience, virtual experience worthy of our students. And Dr. Perman said it very nicely that we're going to do that. We're going to go through this with a lot of love and a lot of patience. Those are all part of mindfulness. As you can see right here, mindfulness can be used in three strategic ways. In the classroom, this is what we are, you know, aspiring to do and will put in place, daily practice during predictable times so that it becomes habituated, the part of the way our students and each other, you know, operate. There will be planned, brief mindfulness breaks. It can be used strategically during the academic activities. It will be incorporated. That's what our teachers will be trained the next couple of days. And that mindfulness practice can also be used as supportive response to those unpredicted stressors, okay? So there's many different ways that we can use mindfulness to support our students and each other. And our aspiration, once again, is focusing on this essential question as we return to school. How are we creating equitable, trauma-informed, trauma-responsive systems that are socially and racially just within a multi-tiered systems of support? We are grounded in our beliefs that our students serve that just, caring, and fair community where they feel safe and belong and achieve at high levels.
So one of the things that we're looking at is making sure that all of our schools have trauma-informed practices. And by that, these are some of the things we really want teachers and administrators and people working in the cafeteria, people, you know, everyone that's on the school side, the paraprofessionals. We really want to empower our students. We don't want to disempower them. We really need to come from a place of unconditional positive regard, even when the child is acting out. We need to come from that place. We still want everyone to maintain those high expectations for our students. We want them to, you know, reach as high as they can and keep encouraging them to try, to keep going. We want our teachers and staff to really, really sometimes look at behavior through a different lens and to understand, you know, let's not make assumptions about that behavior, but really to question it. Sometimes the behavior is, most of the time, a behavior is the only way a child knows how to communicate. And we need to look at it as communication. We need our teachers and staff to really break it down as to what a healthy relationship looks like, but also teach how to have a healthy relationship. So they need to be relationship coaches. We want them to have, we want our students to have meaningful participation. We want them to become more self-aware. I know when we were looking at the Maslow and Bloom, way up at the top is self-actualization. And those things that we start with the physiological safety and move up, it doesn't happen in a linear fashion. And we're all still looking for that self-actualization. But I think before we even get there, we need children to become more self-aware. Self-aware of when, this happens when you're grumpy. This is when we know you're grumpy. This is when we know you're sad. And we want them to have that awareness. And we want them to use all their prior knowledge. And in, you know, we want teachers to integrate the students' prior knowledge and their culture and their experiences into the classroom climate.
So what Ms. Acevedo really was describing in essence is this, right? Just a different way of looking at it. It's what we call the socio-emotional learning or SEL, S-E-L. And what it is, is a process through which children and adults understand, manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others. That whole thing about kindness is very important. Establishing and maintaining positive relationships and, you know, making those responsible decisions. And these are all based in Castle, the collaborative of academic socio-emotional learning. There are the same standards that we have standards for academic learning. This is the standards for socio-emotional learning. So it's not really program-based, it's standards. And we want to make sure this time that we are much more intentional and making sure that our students are experiencing this every single day and every single learning opportunities that they have because this is how the teaching and learning becomes much more relevant to them. And this is just one example of how SEL practices are embedded or integrated into daily learning. If you see that, you know, there are ways to do that where students can share important information for the day, help students remember important deadlines. There's greetings, right? There are different ways that teachers, you know, engage students, they greet each other, different forms of greetings, even virtually. That's really possible. Activities that explore exploration and exploring also not just academics, but some of their emotional state. And sharing, this goes back to the student voice and really honoring our students' voices.
I think, Dr. Shown, too, it's important that, you know, this is going on in our secondary schools. Sometimes it's easy to do many of these things in an elementary classroom. But when we look at advisory or, you know, these are some of the things that we can also put at a secondary, middle school and high school classroom.
Much more.
Same concept, just different activities.
Much more consistently, exactly. And this slide actually shows that, Ms. Acevedo, so how those, the SEL standards on the top, and if you notice, is TK, pre-K to 12. So there are different ways, very relevant to their age level. It's just really about being equitable and allowing all our students to experience this. It's just really about being equitable and allowing all our students to experience this. We mean all, right? You can see that this is one of the many work that our PBIS coaches and task force work during the summer. They have, these are live links that will be shared with teachers. Or, you know, I'll give you a sampling of many of them so that it's ready. They have SEL literature, diverse SEL books. These are self-compassion breaks for teens, different ways that they can engage our students. And very relevant also to what's happening in their, within their community and out there in the world. This is an example of PBIS task force that they created by grade level. So this is much more focused on TK3, so they did it for 4, 6, you know, and so forth. And again, you know, these are ideas ready for teachers' use right away. Social-emotional learning, cultural responsive practices, and restorative, okay? And much more of what you would expect. And we're sharing this with you so that when, when you have those check-in conversations with your child, you just ask, and you can probably hear at times what's going on in the classroom, making sure that they are, they have established classroom agreements and expectations for behaviors back to consistency. I know there's some questions already about what we're going to do when students don't follow directions. Well, I say, let's have that positive presupposition. If everybody in the system will revisit how to structure routines, be consistent, affirm behaviors when they're doing the right thing, make sure that we create time and schedules for all of this happening, then we can see results. And individually in groups of students, here are also the very research-based, very specific strategies that I know some of your parents, many of you who have attended our trainings before, the three-step praise, right? Thank you for being responsible by. That increases the opportunity for students to be self-aware, building relationship five-to-one, et cetera. So these are all proven to be, you know, effective and science-based. We also like this one because it clearly shows everything that we talked about around what's most important in trauma-informed care, right? That safety feeling, choice, making sure that our students have choice and control so that they become more, you know, used to making responsible decisions, collaboration, trustworthiness, and empowerment. And these are just some examples, for the examples of what Ms. Acevedo mentioned earlier about the mind-body mindfulness and body breaks that we're looking forward to making sure a lot more consistent throughout the system. See the Go Noodles? So when you see your, you know, child moving around during, you know, distance learning, that's all part of it. It's intentional because we know that's what they need and not just sitting for a couple hours in front of the computer.
So when we've talked about, I think what's really important and underlines, and I'm going to come back to it because I really believe most of our students are relationship kids. They build their efforts, their interests on relationships. And it's really important to, that they feel respected just as though, as the same as adults in the building, that they feel as respected, but the kids need to feel respected as well. They need to see their teachers as supportive and caring. They need to feel like their teachers are supportive and caring and that their teachers are people that they can go and talk to, that they can talk to about their problems outside of school. They need to believe that discipline is fair and it's not just about negative punishment, but that it's about discipline, that we learn from it, that it's equitable and it's fair. Their instruction in the classroom needs to be connected to what they're interested in as well as what their identity is. And they really need, as Catherine was sharing, some of the different ideas of behavior. They need to feel, believe that their teachers value and reward their efforts each and every day, not just, you know, once or twice a year, but each and every day. And one of the things that our kids need, and every child needs, is a champion. And when we look at what a champion is, it's really noticing that it's about human connection. That kids don't learn from people they don't like. I love this late, great Rita Pearson. One of the things she underlines in her TED Talk or in her presentations is letting every child in her classroom feel, and she tells them, "You were chosen to be in my class. That's how special you are. I was able to choose you." And we all know that teaching and learning should be fun. It should be, it should bring joy, both for the teacher and the student. And we realize for our teachers that this job is really tough, especially now, but we can do it. And we really need that to know, for every adult to know that every child deserves an adult who will never, ever give up on them.
And with this, we just really wanted to circle back to how we started. And that is to remember, parents, to take care of ourselves because we can't pour from an empty cup. And we're going to end today, but first and foremost, just making sure that we acknowledge and thank you. We're grateful for you and our partnership. And going back to that whole notion that we are committed to ensuring that our students succeed in any setting, whether it's distance, hybrid, face-to-face. But first and foremost, that they can actually say that they feel safe, they're valued, they matter, they can be successful, they can make mistakes, and mistakes are part of learning. And that people, a PUSD, all of us surrounding them, believe in them, they're worth something, and that they can trust us. So with that said, we want to thank you for your engagement. This is not a one-time engagement. We are committed to coming back. If you have any other needs that we can continue to support you with. And with this said, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Shon and Ms. Acevedo. Thank you so much for what you've shared. We have time for questions and answers, and we've been collecting those in the Q&amp;A portal. Before I get to that part, I'd like to invite our board member, Dr. Roberta Perman, if you would like to say a few words to our parents.
I'll just take a moment. Thank you, Ms. Walks Harper. Dr. Walks Harper, sorry.
Oh, that's perfectly.
Hi. First of all, thank you, everyone, for coming. It shows a lot of commitment when you come to these meetings in the evening. And I just want you to know that we, we are doing a lot. I personally have been very involved in the sky breathing initiative that we've had at the district. And we've trained almost 200 teachers and staff members in this. So if you wonder, like, what are we doing to really train our teachers? They are going through extensive training in how to breathe, how to, how to learn to stimulate that vagus nerve. So that vagus nerve that, that's responsible for these, the secretion of all these, this adrenaline and cortisol and all these things that, that create this stress. There's science behind it. It works. Number of our teachers have been, a number of our parents have been trained in this. And we're going to have more parenting classes. So please, I encourage you because our children are watching us. They can be, I mean, if they hear us screaming and stressed out, and I feel like that myself sometimes, I mean, I'm, I get super stressed, especially in this situation. If they hear us raising our voices and, and being acting impulsive, that's what they learn and that's what they know. So, so learning how to control our own emotions is huge. I know it's an incredibly stressful time. I, I thank you again for your, for your commitment to the, coming to these meetings and learning more about how we can help the children. At the end of the day, we're going to have, I hope to have a sky breathing club that we can have in the afternoons. We've been talking about it. Where students can drop in and learn this technique. So when that chaos is happening in your lives and that storm is going around you, you can find the eye of the storm. You find that center of the storm. Wherever you are, it travels with you. You have the control. So, so having said that, we're, we're getting to your questions. I'm sure that, you know, Dr. Walks Harper is, is formulating those answers right now. And, and there's, there's a lot, there's a lot going on. And there's a lot that all of our, of our administrators have to do. And I thank all of you on tonight, also from, from the school district for all the time and work you put into presenting this to our families because it's imperative information and we're going to get to all your answers. So we're going to work through this together, and that's what families do. And love to all of you and peace and good health. And, and I'll let you answer the questions now, Dr. Walks Harper. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Perman. You're always so encouraging and caring for our community. We so appreciate you. So I'm going to go through the questions the way that they came into the queue. And some are specific to the presentation tonight and some are a little bit outside of that. But I'll address the others and then I'll give those to both of you that addressed specifically tonight. I had a question, and we've had this question a few times, and we know it's an important piece. A concern about our secondary schedule, where we're doing three periods at a time as opposed to all six. What I want to make sure that we share with you as a community is that the instructional minutes, the amount of time that students will have in each subject is exactly the same. They are grouped in threes so that in the distance learning format, we are only asking students to focus on three at a time. And it was one of those educational decisions, based on research, based on looking at, at practices, that it would be helpful for our students. And so just as in the second semester where you would have teachers' review after winter break, when the students go 1, 2, 3, and they finish in October, and then they go 4, 5, 6 until the end of December, when they come back in January, they're going to come back to 1, 2, 3 again, but with review, just as we would in a traditional semester, we're going to review those subjects again to help them be prepared. We also will work with students in terms of preparation for exams, whether they are AP exams, PSAT exams, SAT exams. We're also building in tutoring support into the distance learning schedule. So we want you to know that we hear you loud and clear and we understand that there's a concern that students have the support they need. And this is specific, again, to the secondary schedule. Another question is, how will PE work? And we won't have your children turning cartwheels in the living room, so I want to assure you of that. But one of the things we, things we will do is we'll look at what can be done within the virtual format. For example, when your child goes out for a particular sport, one of the first things we do is we spend time teaching them the rules of the game, the different incidents that can happen. We teach them about body conditioning. We teach them about health. We teach them about nutrition. What we teach them about getting enough rest. So there are many focus areas related to physical education that can be done in an online format. And we really have an opportunity in this distance learning to focus on those. So know that they will still get their PE credits. They will still get PE instruction. And then as soon as we're able to get them back on campus and practice safely, we will do so. But the credits in PE will continue. The question again, I know we had this Monday about the Padlet. I know we talked about getting it posted on the website for parents. Dr. Shon, can you share something about that?
Yes, let me go ahead and, and share, you know, a sample because we were not able to do it live earlier. So if I may, please, just very briefly, this is an example of Padlet. You can, this is free. You go online, padlet.com, and teachers have access to it. And so there's live engagement in the sense that a teacher can actually ask a question live and like this, what is your self-care approach? And you can see our responses earlier with Ms. Acevedo and what she does to relax her and what I do. And then that, this whole wall can be filled of that engagement. It could also be like an ongoing wall, and you can do this at home with your child. I think you have a limit of about eight, and then you have to like erase it, much like pictures or save it somewhere. This is for our teachers, and we call it our Peacock Moment Wall. And it's all of the affirmations that they receive from either teachers that they have helped and so forth. And we leave it up there so that they can actually see, and it helps them in terms of their emotional state, that what they're doing matters. So again, when we, I think we have shared the PowerPoint and you can access it directly, you can go directly to padlet.com as well. That's just one example of a live engagement that would happen in a classroom. It's already happening during the summer.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And then I had a couple of questions about the cost of insurance for the Chromebooks. First of all, I want to say that every child will have a Chromebook. The insurance is not going to be something that gets in the way of access. And if you have specific concerns in terms of the cost of the insurance or can we get, there's another question about if we have multiple students, is there a discount? Please connect with your child's principal at the school. They will share additional information. But we are not going to use an insurance cost as a barrier to access. And I want to be clear about that. We just need to know specifically from the parent or the caregiver, the concern, and we will make those accommodations. And your child will have the Chromebook at the same time that all the other students have theirs distributed. So please know that we will not have that as a barrier for access. How will parents be informed if students are not completing assignments? So the requirements that teachers have to communicate with families to connect around whether it's attendance or whether it's grading, those continue in distance learning. And you, as a parent, can always email your child's teacher. Everyone's email in the district is firstname dot lastname at pusd.org. We are all the same. You can access email anyone in the district system. So again, it's firstname dot lastname at pusd.org. And if it's for me or someone like me with a hyphenated name or like Dr. Shon, include the hyphen because that's part of the email signature. But again, please email your, your child's principal to get some more clarification. How are teachers trained, Dr. Shon, regarding the methods and self-care that you shared with us tonight?
Well, the good news is that it didn't take us to get to pandemic. We have already started the work since 2014, again, in collaboration with Ms. Acevedo. And I think we have held like six social-emotional learning symposiums that happens at least once a year. But there's ongoing training that has been happening for several years now, but now with much more intensity because, as we said, we wanted to make sure that it's accessible to all students. Tomorrow and Friday, there will be a district-wide professional development day. Some teachers will be, we trained once again on very specific strategies that we know is not only evidence-based, but science, research-based. And we're working collaboratively with school mental health and our counselors. And as we said, it's, it's all hands on deck. And also there are daily interactions at the school site where we support our PBIS teams and coaches who help the teachers as well. And that's an ongoing professional learning engagement around all the areas that we talk about and probably much more, like those restorative practices. They have been doing those already in their schools.
Thank you for that. Another question is, will the district adopt a no-fail policy? And how will parents have information about grades? Again, at secondary, many of our teachers are using the Parent Connect system. But what's most important is as our schools are reaching out to parents and sharing information about the beginning of schools, teachers will be sharing information specifically regarding not only the course syllabus or the course description, but including in that, included in that will be the grading policy. Students will earn grades. This is different than the remote learning that happened in March, April, and May. They will be assessed, but we also know as a district system that with assessment has to come support. And so the support for interventions, for tutoring services and so forth, that will be incorporated into the distance learning format. I had another question regarding an issue with summer school and specific grading or support for a student. Please reach out again to your school principal. If you've moved to a different school from summer school, reach out to the principal where the student was enrolled for summer session so that we can get that resolved. where the student was enrolled for summer session so that we can get that resolved. It may be a mistake, it may be a correction that needs to be made, or additional information, but I do want to make sure that this particular parent reaches out so we can have resolution in terms of the grade that was assessed for the student. Another question came up about counseling support. How will we know as a district if a child needs support? For example, we had students who had received one-to-one counseling. We have students who, parents are saying they're having issues with emotion, depression, anxiety. How do we address those issues within this virtual world and make connections and support our students?
So part of what we have, and it's on our website, there is a referral form, and anybody can make that referral. So if parents are feeling that their child is struggling emotionally at home and they want help, I think the best bet would be to do a school mental health referral. And if you go onto the PUSD website, go into People and Community Services, drop down to School and Community, School and Student Support Services, I'm sorry, Student and Family Support Services, my brain goes dead around this time of the evening. So go into that, click on that, and the form is right there. It will be sent to me, and one of our mental health people will reach out to you as a parent. And even if a teacher sends one in for your child because they are noticing something in the virtual classroom, they will do the same thing and send in a referral. Before anything happens, it will, you will be contacted, and questions, we have a very thorough assessment piece, a screening piece, getting to know what's going on, and then we'll go from there. So we try to connect to services. If your child was receiving services from the school counselor, when we go back, you may want to check in and see if they can continue. It will just be virtually now. That's how we're doing, and that's how our community agencies are providing services as well. But any questions, you can, feel free to email me, call my office, I'd be more than happy to answer them about any kind of counseling you might need.
Thank you so much. Another question is, what would the PBIS reward system look like in our virtual distance learning?
Good question. Actually, our teams have already explored and are ready for that, and we have a virtual reward system. I think in our previous presentation, and this one because we have quite a bit, we even did like the Wheel of Names, right? And the students' names were there, I'm sorry, I did put that here this time, but we've had different strategies already, our site teams have been meeting since the summer. And again, much of those rewards are not always tangible, but there are many different ways that we have done it virtually already and have tested it with teachers. And by the way, I also see part of that question, you know, Dr. Harper, is how they integrate, what exactly does the integration of sale and content area would look like with teachers, right? May I share a screen really quick because this is perfect? This is like live work that our teachers and teacher specialists have been doing and literacy coaches, so that's timely. So parents, you would see this kind of lessons going on. This is powerful, this is math that's live with the third grade, Module One, Lesson One. This is a collaborative between our teams, our math specialists, you know, this is how they get engaged live. You can see the PBIS and the socio-emotional pieces there, how they were shown, some of this are, I think this is really, really good, is what we call the Safe Space, virtually, because we can't be physically present. These are all cop, everything that you see here, you can click, and it leads the student to use that for their own calming mechanism, right? Those are the waves, I have a problem stopping them the other day, and let me just forward it really quick to get to, they're all incorporated there and how they have the lesson specific to Eureka Math, right? And in the end, being able to ask them what was difficult, what was, what do you need more help, right? Name your emotions, learning this will ease our students, being able to be self-aware of their emotions, and then they can actually participate more in class.
Thank you very much for that. Next question is, let's see here, oh, this has to do with scheduling, to know what days children will attend Zoom or other classes. So the schools are sending out schedules, I would say by Friday, we normally send out class schedules the Friday before the school starts the following week, which is usually on a Tuesday. So they will share that information with you. Also, though, just to share additionally, the secondary students, their school day will start at 8:50, I'm sorry, at 8 o'clock in the morning. The elementary, pre-K 6, they start at 8:50, 8:50, so almost 9 o'clock, 10 minutes to 9. But you will get some additional information coming out this week, but just so that you know, there is a difference in start time, 8 o'clock, secondary, and 8:50 at the elementary level. So I wanted to clarify that. And then again, the contact with students, I know that schools have started with distribution schedules to get materials in your hands to start, but also the actual class schedule and teacher assignments are being prepared, and they will come out this week. Likely, they'll come to you through email, or they will post in the Parent Connect system because the mail would be too slow to do that at this point, but your schools will share that information with you. If you haven't connected either by email or telephone with your school and you have additional questions, please send that information, email them, have your name in the queue. I have someone who said that they had emailed to request information about our Parent Center calendar, and they were waiting for a response. If you would go ahead and email me, again, my name is here, first dot last at pusd.org, I'll make sure we get a response out to you tomorrow with the calendar information. Let's see, I just want to make sure I don't miss anything. Follow-up for parents, and that had to do, I believe, with the parent university and the calendar, so we will make sure we get that out to you. A question about the African-American Parent Advisory Council, when will they meet? We normally start those in September. We will be sending that information out. We had been going the fourth Thursday, but I will clarify that with our Parent Center team, and we will get that information and the invitation and yearly schedule sent out. A request for more parent training on dual enrollment and the transition for those students from elementary to secondary. I will share this with our Ed Services team to make sure that we incorporate that in upcoming trainings. Let's see, we covered start time, and let's see, let me just check the queue. Question about how do I help my child when he gets stressed out doing online classwork? Any specific tips for that?
Want to start off, Patty?
Sure, go ahead, Catherine. I think when we talk about the brain breaks and we talk about the times to, you know, to step away from the virtual online classes, it would be important to do that, to take those little moments. When we started our presentation, we had a kind of a chart of some different ideas of getting up to stretch, of getting up to, you know, do a little dance if they need to, doing some different things that will help move the energy through. It is intense. I know there's, you know, I get, after a while of Zooming, you do need to get up, you do need to move around, you might need to step outside. There's just a lot of different ideas. My hope is that, and I know that the teachers on Thursday and Friday are getting a lot of different ideas of how to break up that whole Zooming schedule and being online. Do you want to add to that?
Yeah, just really quick, I am imagining that first slide on the Padlet that we showed them, and you address several of them overlapping, physical, right, emotional. I'm going to share something about relational. We talk a lot about relationship building, and if your child is not a new student in PUSD, what we'll do is we'll leverage what we know about our students and connect them to that adult that they have already deep relationships, right? Even before we start school, you know, a counselor, a teacher, and sometimes a classified staff members is who our students are really associated with. And with that, it eases that whole transition in, and we make sure that we do check and connect or check in. Those are, again, evidence-based practices, but using what we know about the relationships that already develop. The only difference is that we're in distance learning, we can still use them.
Thank you very much. And we have finished our question queue, so I wanted to just give a quick reminder that Monday, 1:30 to 3:30, and again, repeat it, next Wednesday, 5 to 7, all about technology, making sure everyone is plugged in and ready to go, and we'll also have some information presented by our special education team. So that's coming up on Monday. Again, I'd like to thank our team from People and Community Services, I'd like to thank Dr. Shone, I'd like to thank Ms. Acevedo, our community schools staff who are running the queues, and our pupil services staff, getting the webinar set up, everyone. It takes a full team to run this webinar, and we are so grateful for the commitment from our staff. Mrs. Ramundo, if you will close us out, please, thank you.
Thank you to everyone. Parents, we were given a charge this evening. Become a champion for your child. What is the best way to do that? Continue to build strong relationships with them. Encourage them to be proud of who they are and know their character. Teach them to cope with life's ups and downs. Things are going to be different and often challenging, but you can help them get through this. Encourage their confidence. Encourage them to take healthy risk, and most importantly, make sure to maintain open communication with them. We know that this is a difficult and challenging task, but parents, you've got what it takes, and we're excited to see what's coming up next. Thank you again, we appreciate your time and look forward to seeing you again. Good night.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.